Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 8th meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. All members are present. We are just coming out of an executive session. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, and as I mentioned, we have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1703 Unit 2. And also, we did not, we deferred on a approval of a minutes. We didn't have time. I apologize for being just five minutes behind. But, I hope it'll be worth the wait. We have with us this evening, our first appointment, but before we do so, we need to approve our Treasury warrants, 52, 52A, 53, and 53A. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second, is their discussion, I see. Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous. And we don't have any minutes to approve, so we'll get right into it. We want to welcome Mr. Mike Arera, Vice President and Supply Chain Planning and Logistics and General Manager of Analog Devices. I see you have a guest here, I'll let you, give you a chance to introduce your guests. And you're here to give us a status update on the expansion of the beautiful Analog Campus. And so, good evening, and welcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm Mike Arera, and it's a pleasure to be here again. I think I was here probably last, almost a year ago now, I think. Michelle Guy is accompanying me. Michelle is a project manager, so she's really kind of, there's a lot of aspects to a project of this size, and Michelle's really coordinating kind of the go-between, between the construction teams and all the other things that need to happen. Michelle's working at, for us, working for me.
Thank you. And so maybe before you get into your presentation, welcome, Michelle.
Thank you.
I want to just turn to our manager, who maybe can give us a little introduction of why you're here, and how we got to this point, if you don't mind, thank you.
So just as a recall, you may recall that a little over a year ago now, Analog approached us about the prospect of some expansion that they were seeking to do to their Wilmington headquarters. They were also contemplating the prospect of other locations for the purpose of expanding and creating their corporate campus. We engaged in some discussions over the course of a few months, and ultimately reached an agreement for a tax increment financing program in which the town, basically over the course of an eight-year period, agreed to defer, if you will, on property taxes worth $4.3 million over the course of the eight-year period. In addition, the town agreed to waive up to $700,000 in fees associated with building permits and various permitting. And in exchange, Textron committed to build their, expand their campus here in...
Sorry, Analog?
I'm sorry, Analog. Sorry about that. Analog agreed to expand their campus here in Wilmington, and committed to 1,555 jobs being here, adding 50 jobs as part of that complement, new jobs, bringing in personnel from a couple of their other facilities in Norwell and Chelmsford, Norwood and Chelmsford. And so, it was really turned out to be a very good partnership. And so, I asked Mike to provide us with a status on where things are. I know Karen Rassus, our Principal Assessor, has been in touch with the folks at Analog and has had some limited visits there, and tells me that things are really ramping up, so.
Great. So again, Mike and Michelle, thank you for being here. I see you have a presentation, so we're eager to see that, and hear all the good things that are going on over there, and especially about that job creation as well.
Okay.
The floor is to us, thank you.
Okay, so thank you. So I'm just gonna walk through a few slides, recap a little bit of what the project's about, and really just show some, talk a little bit about the timeline, and then show some photos of where we're at. So, recapping the project's scope, we're, you know, it's not just an expansion, we're moving our headquarters to Wilmington, Massachusetts. Our headquarters is currently in Norwood, Massachusetts. It's a recap, we operate large facilities down in Boston, at 125 Summer Street, and in Santa Clara, California, as well as Limerick Island, and then a number of other locations around the globe. Our headquarters, which is currently in Wilmington, or sorry, is in Norwood, will be moved up there to Wilmington upon completion of the screening. Looks like I got a little...
That's not...
That's not part of my slide. So, we are, recap what's involved here, we're adding an office building, 175,000 square-foot R&amp;D building. We're adding about a 50,000 square foot, we call it a community space, but it's really the, it's the hub of the campus. It's where our guests will, it would be the arrival center for the campus, so any guests, whether they be customers or suppliers, or any other outside organizations, as well as really the meeting place, really the center, the heartbeat of the campus for our employee teams. We're putting in a garage to hold about 600 cars. We did that, we actually have plenty of space on the campus, but we wanted to maintain as much of the green space as possible, so we're putting in a garage. And then, we'll also, at the end of the project, be renovating the existing office buildings on the campus up to the new standard. So that's the project's scope. This is a rendering of what the project, so anybody, we would've been here a year ago with these, I think basically the same picture. This is existing, and this is existing, this is the hub in the center, connected by these bridges. This is the 175,000 square-foot office building, and this is the garage in the back. To kind of orient you, industrial way would be back up this way, and Woburn Street would be down over this direction. So that was the rendering. This is actually an aerial shot from a couple of weeks ago. So you can see, these are the existing buildings. This is, the hub is there, the bridges are there, the office building, the shell, these are really just a shell at this point. The garage is, just started in this photo, I took a look at it today, and it's all, it's almost done, the actual physical structure. So the, whereas this, these buildings are traditional, you know, steel beam and construction. Now putting the glass on, this is kind of a prefab, comes almost like a kit, and they put it together onsite, so that's almost, the structure is almost done. We won't actually put cars in there until sometime late in the fall, this work to be done with facilitization, and things like that. So that's what that looks like today. So walk you through again, a bit of the, of what the campus is all about. We have over 2,000 employees, 700,000-plus square feet of our, of manufacturing and research and design space, the community center.
Consolidated.
Consolidate, kind of can't read that from here, consolidated of the our Massachusetts locations, so Chelmsford and Norwood. So the timeline, so we mentioned we were here about a year ago, we had a groundbreaking in August of last year, we'd actually done a little bit of work before then. And we are currently right in the middle of the major construction for both the hub and the office building. We expect to complete the hub building in the fall/winter of this year, and then do the outfit, and be, actually occupy that building around February/march. So we're in that building, I'll show you a little bit more about what's in that building on the next slides. And the office building, it's just a little bit behind the hub building, so we'll be occupying that building in about, just about this time next year, the summer of 2020. After we do that, then our team from Norwood can move up, because they'll actually go into that office building. And we'll start the renovation project for the rest of the space of the, of Building One, and what we call Building One and Building Six, the other two office buildings on the campus. And only after we complete that, can we bring the Chelmsford team down, because we need to, it's a bit of a shell game, so we've got to clear out a floor, renovate it, move people, so the last thing then would be, come in, would be the Chelmsford piece. So that's the schedule, we're essentially right on schedule. I'm not going to go through all the pieces on this slide, but just to let you know that we spent a lot of time thinking about what are we trying to get done here. It's not just office buildings, it needs to reflect who we are as a company, some of our values, things about sustainability, things about security, without it being overtly, you know, look like a, you know, overly secure, and really that it's, we're a tech company, and we want it to be a tech showcase. So, these were just some of our principles that we thought about, and they really influence how we charter the architectural teams when they're making their choices. Sustainability, and we talked about this in the past, a couple of things we're doing here, we're putting some solar system, a 1.2-megawatt solar system on the top of the garage. So this is actually a, kind of a picture at the top of the garage, and there'll be, actually forms like a decking of solar panels, to provide some of the needs on the campus, not all. And we're also going to be adding charging stations, we have about 14 charging stations on the campus today, we're gonna add another 14, day one, into the, into the parking garage. But we have a roadmap to get us up to around 96 charging stations, as, so as the, as the need grows, as we expect it will, then we'll be, we have kind of a roadmap as to how we're going to support that. So the hub building, that's, by the way, that's a photo of what it's actually gonna look like, this is the main entrance to the campus here, so you'll walk in. It's gonna have an auditorium, about 100-seat auditorium, a forum area, which is kind of a large, open meeting space, right in the middle of the cafeteria, it's kind of a combination hangout space and large town hall meetings that we can hold. It's the main reception to the campus, we're gonna have a full-service gym down in the, what is the basement of the building, and patio space, sorry, couldn't read that patio, and I'll show you, I'll show you actually some photos of that. So this is just a couple of renderings now of what the main entrance to the campus, when you come visit us, you're gonna walk in, it's gonna look very similar to this, reception around, you can see around the back, you'll actually be able to enter into the main part of the cafeteria, or you come up the stairs here to other, you know, other meeting rooms and the auditorium and things like that, will be up the stairs. And/or you can walk across the bridges then to enter some of the other buildings. That's just another shot of how the staircase is gonna look. These actually are the, essentially the finishings that we've selected in the pictures here, so that's really is what it's gonna look like. This is a picture of that forum area, so this is actually what it looks like today, it's under construction, that's actually just from a couple of weeks ago, shot, that's just steel right now. What it's gonna look like, it's gonna be, the cafeteria area is here and all down below, the servary, I don't have a picture, but a really state-of-the-art kitchen area, servary, and then for employees to sit. What we're showing here is if we want to have a town hall meeting, we're gonna have the screen that we can kind of drop down. It's, how big is this thing?
I think it's 15 feet, approximately.
15 feet or so, it's a gigantic LED screen that we can drop down, and we can, we can have a meeting here, that we can actually beam to our auditorium in Santa Clara, or to our auditorium in Bangalore, or to our auditorium in Limerick, or any of the other facilities, and actually be able to have a town hall meeting. So that, since we're a global company, this is really gonna be a real step forward for us to be able to interact real-time with employees around the globe. So that's what that's gonna be like, so it's, and you can see that, you'll actually be able to put people, we can put, we figured several hundred.
About 600 people.
600 people between here, between around the top, I mean, these are floating staircases up, and a little bit even standing area up at the very top there. This is down below, there's a gym. So this would actually, we got a full-service gym, men's and women's locker rooms, studio for, you know, yoga, or other kind of exercise classes. This is actually below grade here, so you come in, and then you'll, you'll kind of come up above, we'll, we actually had to do quite a bit of actually blasting to dig that space to put in the gym. I would say, I'd probably pass a general comment, but certainly we had to work with some of the town's firemen, things like that, for the blasting. Super helpful, coordinated with us on any of the schedules. I can tell you, feedback also with regard to, certainly Karen coming out for the assessors, the planning boards, we had to make some changes, and you know, really on permitting, super accommodating. Al and the folks from the inspector's office have been really, getting a lot of good feedback from not just our team, but the construction folks we're working with, that it's real, you guys are making it easy to do, to work with, which we certainly appreciate. So that's the gym, people are really excited about this, that we're gonna have, it's right on, no excuses anymore for any of us, because it's right there. And that's just a shot, one of the things that we changed here, that you guys worked with us on in terms of the permitting, was we actually added a roof deck on the top here, so this is still grass on that end, but we actually made this a patio area up on the roof. So it's gonna, here's kind of a shot at what that looks like. So this is glass looking into the buildings, that's all sunlight, and right down into the cafeteria through all, through all the floors, or at least through the first and second floor. And then this is patio area for people to hang out and congregate for this time of year, when the weather's, when the weather accommodates that. Again, one of the things we were going for here, and you'll see it throughout the campus, is just a lot of informal spaces, so people get up and out of their offices and can, and This is the office building, rendering of the office building, again, meeting spaces, a lot of collaboration, as I mentioned, huddle rooms, open space, and, what does that say there?
Community space.
Community space, I can't read that one. So that's, this would be actually the view as you're coming in from industrial way of the building, the hub building would be over here, and the garage would be back on the other side there. Again, this would be, you walk in the main entrance to that building, you can kind of get a feel, it's, it's, it's not an open, you know, you think about open, like Google kind of spaces that are open-open, where people don't have even a cube or a personal space, that's, isn't quite what we went for, people, there will be, everyone will have personal space in the form of either cube or an office, but we're going for a real open kind of a look, and everybody, all these spaces will have stand-up desks, so that every, you know, one has that opportunity if they want to work in a, in a standing position, as opposed to seated or move around during the day. This is kind of a cool feature in that building, so if you noticed in the design, it was kind of, kind of a three-segmented building, and in between each of the segments, there's an open, so this is a skylight in the building, but it's open all the way down, so the light cascades down into, it's a three-floor building, but all floors get the natural light through the middle of the building, with this kind of open staircase up the middle. This is another view of just some of the collaboration zones, you see kind of the cube space, and the idea here is we sprinkle in a lot of just meeting and huddle spaces all throughout, so it's a, it's a combination of, you know, personal space, meeting spaces, personal space, meeting spaces, so if we're just having a conversation, say, let's walk over, we can just, there's always something within eyesight, where you can find a spot to go, if you want a whiteboard or things like that, that the folks can work. Here's a view actually at the, I think this would actually be that open, the skylight would be here, and this is kind of the open stairs, so just kind of a sense, there's different kind of meeting spaces like this, just sprinkled throughout. I'm gonna skip the video here if I can, because you, I think a lot of you guys were there for the, you recall the groundbreaking, Jeff said a few words, we had Secretary Ash and Senator Tar join us that day. This was our topping-out ceremony, so there's a tradition in construction, Chuck could give me the details, but basically, it goes back, there's a lot of, you know, lore of where it started, but basically, at the final raising of the final beam, there's a ceremony, it's really a celebration of the construction workers and the work that they've done.
It's kind of a big celebration of the safe completion of the steel component
Yes, yeah.
of the erection, so.
So we had, it has a Christmas tree, which you can kind of see in the back, that's part of the tradition, so there's a Christmas tree strapped to the beam, as well as a flag, and employees signed the beam, and we raised it, and it was a bit of a celebration, a big cake, and employees, you can try to employ involvement, get people excited about where we're at with the project, that just completed in April. So here's a couple pictures, shots off of, so this would be off of our fab building, that's just the open space that was there, and there, of course, the building's there now. This is another shot, this, if you went, came to the groundbreaking, this is where the stage would've been right below here, and all employees would've been standing, or guests would stand right here. Now, if you looked out that same view, the hub building is, is standing in that location. And kind of one more, this is off of our existing office building, Building One, looking back towards the other existing office building, and the hub building is going there, Building Seven is here, and the garage is going there, so you can see right off to the left here, here's the office building and what it looks like today. The glass has gone in on this side, and I saw actually, as I went out today, they're starting to put some of the metal facing that goes here in the mullions on the windows, so they're moving right along, and of course, you see the hub building there. So, I think that was all I had in terms of slides, so I just maybe in conclusion, you know, we were here, geez, we started this discussion, Jeff, a year and a half ago, I'd say, and we got to a point where we were moving forward, just about this time last year, groundbreaking in August. And I would say, and you can't always say that about construction projects, that we're right on both schedule and budget at this stage, and so we feel pretty good about where we're, where we're at. We're excited about getting it done, and getting the team consolidated up here in Wilmington. I think we feel like we made the right choice in terms of continuing to go long in our presence here in Wilmington. And I mentioned that the cooperation with the town and with our construction folks has been superb, and so we appreciate that, and so we're just looking forward to inviting you all out for the, for the ribbon-cutting next year.
Great. Well, thank you, Mike and Michelle, for obviously a very impressive presentation, it's clear that you have a lot of exciting things going on in your campus, and we're glad that you chose Wilmington. Once again, I want to open this up to my colleagues who might have a comment or questions.
Just thank you for the presentation. As we said, it's a win-win for the community, we hope for you, looking forward to the tour. So, my thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm just gonna echo what Mr. Kyra said, you were here a year ago, and you're really moving on the project, and it really looks good, it's like almost like a college campus in the middle, you know, so, and I remember you saying back then, it was to attract people from throughout the country to come to here, and it looks good, it's, you're moving right along, and that's what you need to do, and you're doing it.
Yeah, we really feel like, we mentioned that before, it's a good point, thanks for reminding me, yeah, that we are competing for talent, and it's, you know, that we really are hiring out of the best schools around, not just the country, and, and it's not just about the job or the paycheck, it's the destination and the vibe, and you know, that's, that's what we're looking for.
I remember that, thank you.
By the way, and we actually have, we feel like, because there was a lot of talk about whether we should be in Boston, because that's where the millennials want to go, and it's a kind of a, you know, we actually, we want to hire them, but we want to keep them. And we have a lot of long-term employees at Analog Devices, you probably know that, people come, and it's a good company, and they grow their careers there, and there tends to be opportunity for them to do that, so, they're gonna, they're not gonna want to live in Boston or Cambridge all their lives, they're gonna want to come up to the burbs and raise a family, and so we think, we think we've built the right kind of a campus for them to do that, so.
Good.
Thank you. I have, we'll go right down the line, if you don't mind, just two questions. Number one, as you mentioned, jobs, maybe could you expand upon that, how that going, did you start that process of hiring some new folks yet?
So we've been, we're constantly hiring, so really, we've actually, since, boy, a year ago, we had just started the Boston office, we have, I think, 140, 150, I can't remember how many employees down in Boston, 120 or something like that. So, we've been hiring in Boston, that's our garage primarily, which is really somewhere really advanced development, we continue to hire in, here in Wilmington. In fact, we are, we are bursting at the seams at the current campus, we have essentially no space. We talked about even, should we put trailers or some other kind of temporary, because we continue to hire, and we don't have, we're moving people around for, just to find places for new hires. We built a little hoteling space, where that's just, you know, for when people come in, because there's no longer visitor offices for anybody to go to, because they're all full, so I would say we just continue, you know, we're continually, you know, retooling and rehiring. Right now, we're in college hire season, which is creating a real problem, because all of the new college recruits are starting, and we're scrambling, we're kicking incumbents out to remote parts of the campus, so we can put the new hires in with their team, so I would say we're essentially probably right on track. And the consolidation, the Norwood team, as I mentioned, will be coming up in, some of them will start to come up by the end of this year, as the, but the full scale will be in summer of next year, and then the Chelmsford folks about a year later, once we've renovated the rest of the campus.
Yeah, glad, glad to hear that there's job creation going on there, and hopefully you'll take a special, close look at those Wilmington folks, and who knows, you'll probably get an influx of resumes tomorrow, having seen this presentation, right? My second question, and the final question, is that, like Mr. Kyra, I look forward to seeing the campus. Have you given any thought to potentially doing an open house for the community, of people who have invested in this, something like that?
We, I guess we hadn't actually planned any such thing, but I, we'd be happy to do that, I think that'd actually be a nice, we can do that, we're gonna want to show it off, we'll pick, before the weather gets, you know, in, probably sometime in 2020, we'll have the hub open anyway, so that's a great idea, we'll plan on something, probably in the, I would say, late summer or fall maybe of 2020, once we're in, and we've debugged it and worked through our PUDS list.
I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Arera, I think you've been here, I just wanted to thank you again for investing in Wilmington, not just with the job creation and job retention, but also what appears to be really a first-rate facility. I think you folks are gonna certainly have the ability to attract the best of the best with the facility that you folks are really creating, with all the collaborative space and all the, really, the modern workplace amenities that a lot of your target employees are gonna be looking for, so, well done, and we look forward to future updates.
So, the new kid, I didn't get to see the groundbreaking, but I did want to thank you both, as, as much as I want to see the facility when it's completed, I have to say that I'm the proud mama of a rising seventh grader who discovered the robotics club in sixth grade, so I appreciate all that Analog has done for the STEM Fair in town, and just, I know that you're working with our schools kind of behind the scenes, and I don't think a lot of our community is aware of your contributions in that respect, so I just want to thank you for being a great example of responsible, you know, partnering with the town and building a respectful campus, that's gonna add to our beauty and not detract in any way. But I would, just playing off of what Chairman Bendel said, you know, any way to show those kids what they should be aspiring for, I don't care if you invite the whole community, but I think if you can get those students in there, especially the ones who are considering careers in that field, in those fields, I think would be a great motivation for them to keep going.
One of the things we do have now, is we really have the kind of, we didn't have great space to host large sessions, we didn't have a big auditorium, or any kind of large meeting space, and we're gonna have all that now, so actually, we'd be happy to, to take you up on that, to at a minimum have some of the kids come out and show them around.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Absolutely couldn't agree more. And also, we should highlight, I want to thank you for your donation of trees last year to the community as well.
Happy to do it.
Much appreciated.
Paying for the concert at the 4th of July, too.
Yeah, we do, we, you know, we, we've said it before, and we really, in all the areas where we, where we operate, we feel like we want to be a good member of that community, not just a, not just a company that happens to operate there, and we certainly believe that to be true here in Wilmington.
Mr. Al?
Hi, just a question with respect to any issues that we can be of assistance with going forward. I think at one point when we talked, this was perhaps a few months ago, there was some discussion about transportation, the Anderson/Woburn connection there, any progress there?
So I would say, so we, actually, this is one of the many projects that Michelle is working on. What looks like we're gonna do to start with, is we're gonna set up an arrangement with either Lyft or Uber, it actually looked like Uber had the better program, where we can set up employees who work in the Boston area to take the train, and we can kind of, we'll provide them actually a reimbursement. Actually, it'll be kind of a prepaid, and it's kind of geofenced, that it's still need to be used for those point-to-point.
The nice thing is, we're not the first company with this problem, this first-last-mile thing is something that a lot of companies are facing.
This first-last-mile thing is something that a lot of companies are facing. So we did quite a bit of research into different ways we could solve this problem, and it seems like, you know, ultimately, the thing that has prevented a lot of people from moving to a shuttle over the past is that it's just not flexible and it's very costly. And, and this whole using Ubers and reimbursing it has kind of enabled a lot of companies to create a service to connect up campus to public transportation, and we haven't moved forward quite yet. It's definitely going to be something that we probably do a bit in coincidence with moving up a lot of people from Chelmsford to Norwood, because we want to expand options for them. But we are looking forward to connecting campus up to, to Anderson, and we definitely see it as something that we're gonna move forward with.
Yeah, and if it gets enough scale, then we'd probably go to our own shuttle or something. But it's a matter of, you gotta start small to what's appropriate for the population. There is one, I don't know if this is actually Wilmington, or whether it's Woolburn, what I'd really love is if at some point we could reconnect Woolburn Street, the dead ends, and then there's a, you know, to the...
Boston Street Bridge.
Yeah, so, you know, if there was a way, because honestly, I could see us putting either bicycles that we would, you know, give our employees, that they could go back and forth to the, to the train station and you, you know, anything, if we could connect. Right now, we have some...
He means from walking, not driving point of view.
Yes, employees who are, you know, they, if they need to walk today, they can either walk all the way out and around past Raytheon and down Presidents Way, which is two and a half mile walk or something. Or they can kind of go as the crow flies, but they, you know, they need to go, it says here, there's a stretch where they just have to go down by the, you know, tracks, and it's not at all what we want employees doing. So if we could actually connect that through at some point, there's probably other cool things we could do, you know, in terms of making that really commutable for our employees.
Certainly take that under advisement.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Hall?
No, I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to hear about the project and look forward to the ribbon cutting.
Excellent.
And just lastly, I know that your company does a fantastic job of putting out press releases and promoting itself in the media, and I hope you'll continue to do that, certainly in letting people know that you've chosen Wilmington as your world headquarters, which would be great for us to brag about the good things you folks are doing. And that's one of the things that the town is trying to do right now. We recently formed, as you know, our Economic Development Committee. I want to acknowledge the chairman of the Economic Development Committee is here tonight, Mr. Shampu. And so what we're trying to do is to promote Wilmington as a good place to do business, so I hope you'll help us do that.
Well, certainly, I can, I mean, we will certainly do a press release as we move, move up, and once we make that our headquarters, everything that goes out, it's gonna say, "Analog Devices, a Wilmington, Massachusetts company," dead of today, it says in Norwood, so it'll be on all of them.
Look forward to it. Well, thank you again, Mike and Michelle, appreciate you being here, best of luck.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. We'll transition right into communications. Mr. Hall?
Yes, under communications, we have a memo from Valerie Gingrich, the Planning and Conservation Director, with respect to the open space and recreation plan. This is a document that is updated, take care, is updated every five years. It was last updated in 2015. This document provides an inventory of the town's open space, addresses progress towards goals, and also looks back on what goals that were previously set have been achieved. The plan is to reform the committee, which was previously in place prior to the 2015 update. Will also include some staff, RAC, DPW, members of boards and commissions, and will be seeking a few interested residents to participate on the committee. The expectation is that the committee will start meeting in September, expect to meet during the fall, provide progress towards the current plans, probably conduct some kind of a survey of residents, and identify actionable items going forward. The plan ultimately is to submit this to the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Division of Conservation Services for approval. And once that goes in, then upon approval, it makes the town eligible for grants for the purpose of additional open space and recreation-related activities.
Thank you.
Next is correspondence from Kerry Bogden from FEMA, and this is with regard to an update on the digital flood insurance rate maps. There were, this was initially started in 2016. Maps were updated from Middlesex County. The U.S. Geological Survey has worked with FEMA to provide updated engineering analysis of several rivers in the Middlesex County area. And they will be holding meetings over the next few months, and specifically, the dates are Tuesday, July 16th at 1:30 PM at the Hable Library, Wednesday, July 17th, 9:00 AM at the Manchester Department of Public Works, and then Wednesday, July 17th, 1:00 PM, New Hampshire Fire Academy Dormitory Building. We will be sending a representative from the town to one of those meetings. The next piece of correspondence is really tied to that, and that is correspondence from our town engineer, Paul Looney, just noting that, first of all, he's been the point person with respect to all the mapping and FEMA-related work. His office is clearly, part of the responsibility is maintaining FEMA maps. So representative from his office will be attending the meeting on the 16th. It's our understanding that the focus will be on the Shoshine River Basin. Next, under correspondence is memo from me to the board with respect to the inhabitant bylaw committee. Just as a note, they will be meeting on the 11th of July, that's their first meeting. I'd also note that two members of the committee, Dan Stewart and Hurak Shaw, have indicated to the town clerk that they are unable to continue to serve, and as a consequence, there are two spots that are vacant. I would just note to the board that there were five individuals that were appointed to this committee, one by each of the members of the Board of Selectmen. At the time, Dan Stewart was appointed by Chairman Bendel, and Hurak Shaw was appointed by then Selectman Judy O'Connell. So subject to the desires of the board, my suggestion would be that Chairman Bendel and Selectman Omahoney, who is essentially in the seat of, that was Ms. O'Connell's and then became Ed Louds, that they be given the opportunity to consider individuals for appointment to this committee, and perhaps that be an issue of discussion for your meeting in August.
Are there any objections to that last recommendation? Certainly want to give Ms. Omahoney the opportunity to appoint somebody in.
Sure, yeah. I've actually already reached out to someone in the hopes that that would be what would be happening tonight, and not to hinder the progress of the committee.
Well done. Thank you.
So the next item under correspondence is correspondence regarding the Restusha rink. Members may recall at a prior Selectmen's meeting, there was discussion about the Restusha rink, and I believe there was a question raised as to the, the ability to, the flexibility of that $2.25 million that was appropriated at a special town meeting in December of 2014. And I incorrectly stated at the time that I did not believe that the appropriation was specific to the Eleanor Restusha rink. Subsequent to that, I received an inquiry asking about that. I did go back and check the town meeting records, and in fact, the article was to raise and appropriate or borrow an amount of $2.25 million specifically for the Eleanor Restusha Memorial Arena. So just to be clear, that article from the town meeting, the special town meeting of December 2014, was specific to, to that rink.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
No, just to make one more small correction. At the time that we made the appropriation, I also looked at the article. I know we had former Selectmen Newhouse came in talking about that, it was rink-specific, and I know the town manager talked about rink-specific. And I was to believe it was rink-specific at the time, but I got the article, and I did read it at our last meeting, and I just, and it may very well be just a rink, but I just went for the sake, because I know there was a couple of members up here that talked about maybe recreational use. And I'll just read it real quick. It's Article One, and this is the actual article that the folks that voted on the special town meeting, I think it was in December. It says, "To see if the town would authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase and eminent domain all or all portions of the right and to interest of the Eleanor and Restusha Memorial Arena, and to those certain, to those certain properties identified as the Town Assessors Map, Map 44, Apostle 178, Map 53, Apostle 158-5, and number 190, 10, 190, Main Street Wilmington, for the use..." Here it is, here's the, here's the part, "for the use of a skating rink and other recreational amenable purposes." And I just want to say, it did, I didn't think that, but it does say that in the article, recreational use. So it does say that, just to let folks know. But I'm saying, at the end of the day, it may very well just be a rink, but the bottom line is, it did say recreational, so if we did a rink and something else, we could look at it, but we had that option. But I just thought I'd let folks know that it mentioned that, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure.
I just want to thank Mr. Hall for including this communication tonight. He did send it to the board, and I had been kind of researching, because I was the one who asked the question, if it was rink-specific. And I don't, and it wasn't just Mr. Hall who said he didn't believe it was. I believe former Selectmen Newhouse also said he thought it was just for a rink, and it wasn't specific to the Restusha property. After that Selectmen's meeting, a few members of the community who were at that meeting, I wasn't at the special town meeting for the rink, they came up to me and said, "We were at that meeting, we thought we were there to buy Restusha, not to just build a rink anywhere." So Mr. Hall, you know, was great about researching it for us to make sure he had the right answer. I'm glad that we're all on the same page, so that the community knows that, you know, we have this committee for this interest, for the rink, we know there's a need for it to explore other indoor recreational options. But my understanding at this point procedurally is, if there is a plan in place, it would have to go in front of town meeting again before anything would go forward. There isn't this $2.25 million outstanding kind of blank check available to buy anywhere, it was specific to Restusha. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I acknowledged Mr. Hall for, for researching that. I was trying to find the special town meeting on WCTV to make sure there was no oral amendments, because the annual report reflected that it was just Restusha. So I appreciate you put the time in to get the correct information, so that we all are on the same page with the process going forward.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And the committee is aware of that. They were made aware of that at our first meeting, of what manager Hall investigated and found for us, as well as what Mr. McCoy read. So the committee does realize that it would have to go to town meeting in this regard.
And thank you to the volunteers on that committee. Okay, thank you.
Next, under correspondence is a communication from Jeffrey Dugan, Assistant Director for Community Services, Mass. Commission on Disabilities. This is with respect to a municipal ADA improvement grant program. There are two types of grants available. One is a planning grant that would look at reviewing communities' policies and procedures with respect to making its facilities and programs accessible to those with various disabilities. The other program is a project grant, which would actually fund work that would remove particular structural barriers in a building. The maximum grant amount is $250,000. I have provided a copy of this to George Hooper, the Public Buildings Superintendent, also copied D. Janetti, who is the chair of the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities. The grant program applications indicate should not be submitted before August 1st, and then it just notes that applicants need to be mindful that they have approximately a six-month window to ensure the bidding is done and the work is completed. So this is something we'll take a look at. I suspect, if anything, we may, the planning grant may be more up our alley at this point as opposed to a structural grant.
Thank you.
Next is correspondence from Eric Jewell, Government and Public Affairs, from the Mass. Department of Transportation, with regard to recent fare increases at the MBTA. Obviously, this affects Wilmington, because we have the two stations in town, and these changes were effective as of July 1, 2019. Wilmington is Zone 3, so we're just notes here, the schedule, a one-way ticket in the Zone 3 is $8, reduced fare, $4 monthly, monthly pass is $261. Next is correspondence from Mia Kenia, Communities Responding to Extreme Weather. And this is correspondence really seeking, I think, the Board of Selectmen's support or endorsement of efforts that apparently some, a number of communities, she specifically references Boston and Cambridge hosting a Climate Preparedness Week. September is National Preparedness Month. These events are slated to occur the last week in September, the 24th through the 30th. Basically, educational programs that communities would develop, participants organize at least one event in their community that can fall into one or more of the three categories: educational events, workshops, movie screenings, presentations, service events, tree plantings, deep paving or shoreline greening, planning events, making emergency plans, or community resource maps. This is all around the issue of recognizing and taking steps in light of the, the global warming concern. There is a proclamation that she also includes, that apparently she's distributed to various communities. So this is, was directed to the board and is presented to the board for your consideration and whether you want to pursue any action on that. Next, under correspondence, we have information from Verizon, just noting that one of their programs, the Regional Sports Network, fee will increase from $789 to $889 per month. This takes effect October 1st of this year, and they will be notifying their customers as of their August 1 bill. Also correspondence from, from Xfinity, noting that they're ending their, as of June 25th, Xfinity On-Demand app will no longer be available on their TiVo devices.
Okay, moving into board to considers, please.
Board to consider, the first request is from Reverend... Board to Consider, the first request is from Reverend Ronald Grimley, Abundant Life Church of Wilmington, seeking to use the Town Common for a wedding on Saturday, August 31. His note indicates the wedding would be from 6:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. If you bought 50 chairs set up before at about 5:15, would appreciate the board's consideration. There is no other event scheduled on the Common at that time.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, there's a motion. Is there a second? Second, am I, Mr. Eaton? Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, and our congratulations to the two.
Happy couple.
A happy couple. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request from Amy Bishop for the Wilmington High School Girls Varsity Hockey Team to conduct a fundraising car wash on September 22 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Fourth of July parking lot. As you know, this would be at the same time that the Farmers Market is conducting their operation, and it's my understanding that the Farmers Market has no issue with this were to be granted.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
A second.
Second, am I, Mrs. Omahoney? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
Next is a Board to Consider request from Michelle Graishaw to use Rotary Park for a birthday party on August 17. The initial request came in from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. As was pointed out to me, the Rotary is also looking to use Rotary Park on that same date to have their ice bucket challenge. As it turns out, the request from Ms. Graishaw came in, I believe, in late June. We did receive a request on Friday, this past Friday, from Rotary looking to also use Rotary Park from, Rotary, Rotary Park from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Fortunately, we've been able to work out a compromise of sorts. The biggest concern, quite frankly, was parking. I think both groups could have probably used different spaces in the park, but the parking was going to be the issue. Ms. Graishaw has agreed to move the, her event back from noon until 3:00 p.m. In speaking with Mike Burns from Rotary, the, typically, their event goes from 9 until noon, or 10 until noon. This year, they were looking to expand it, but he's agreed also to, to essentially the 8 to noon, so both events could be accommodated. So with respect to this one, if the time is granted from noon until 3, that should not be a problem.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
And if you don't mind, I'll just take the other one out of order since it is dealing with the same issue. This is the request from Wilmington Rotary. They indicate August has been designated as ALS month for the fifth year. The Wilmington Rotary Club will be holding a community ice bucket challenge on Saturday, August 17, Rotary Park. This letter reads 10:00 a.m. Nearly 20,000 has been raised through our past four ice bucket challenges, and importantly, all monies raised have gone directly into further research to find both a treatment and cure for this horrendous disease. ALS commonly known as Lou Gehrig's Disease is a progressive neurodegenerative disease that affects the nerves, nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord, and is always fatal. Unfortunately, too many of us have been visited by this disease through family, neighbors, or friends. The Rotary Club is requesting the Board of Selectmen approval for the use of the Rotary Park. Again, it references 8 to 3, but we've, they've since agreed to 8 to noon. Further, we would like to challenge the Selectmen to join us on August 17 and take the challenge. Again, I would like to emphasize the fact that all monies raised will go directly towards research, towards both treatment and cure for ALS. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's nothing more than, and I would like to be there on this day to do the ice bucket challenge with you, Mr. Chairman, like we did last year, but I'll be away that day.
I would like to challenge anyone who's not on vacation to come. I think I had mentioned this when it was on the important dates. I've been on the Team Liden team for the Angel Fund for the last, I think, five years, and have worked with Mike on that, and Team Liden wears green, so all my supporters wear green, so we can show these, the rest of the Board of Selectmen how to do it right, and see who else shows up to give some ice dumped on them.
Well, Mr. Kerry, I find it pretty ironic that only a year after you dumped your bucket on me, you can't be there this year.
I wish I could be there, Mr. Bendel.
But it's a great cause, and certainly we look forward to it. So there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. And thank you to both groups for compromising there and accommodating each other.
Next is a request. This comes from Jamie McGoldy, Operations Manager at the DPW, that actually was initiated from a resident on Tanner Road, seeking additional stop signs at McDonald Road. DPW has reviewed the situation. Essentially, there's multiple streets coming into that location, and the recommendation is three stop signs, particularly in light of the two developments that have occurred at the end of McDonald Road. There's an increase in traffic, and as Mr. McGoldy quotes, "Per the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, multi-way stop applications, multi-way stops may be considered when there is a need to control left-turn conflicts in order to help improve operational characteristics of the intersection." Considering the fact that the major leg of the intersection changes direction in addition to an increase in traffic generated from recent projects in unconventional proximity to the existing driveways, it is recommended, based upon the, on engineering judgment, that the intersection be controlled with a four, with a four-way stop sign. So the additional stop signs are recommended for McDonald Road at McDonald Road heading northward, McDonald Road at McDonald Road heading eastward, and Buttesworth Street at McDonald Road.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made. Second? Seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none? Move on to announcements? And do we have any announcements? Mr. Eaton?
I know that a number of us were able to go to Mike Morris's retirement party a few weeks back, and I did just want to publicly state what all of us have stated to him one-on-one. Mr. Morris is retiring after, I believe, 32 years of being our town accountant, and Lorraine Herman, also in that office, just retired a few months ago. And I do just want to say that both of them built up very good, successful careers, and both did a very good job, and I'm glad to see that Brian Perry is on-boarded and ready to take the reins. So thank you again to Mr. Morris and Ms. Herman, and best of luck to Mr. Perry.
Absolutely. Any other announcements?
Yeah, just, I would agree with Mr. Eaton's mentioning about Mike Morris and Lorraine, but we had the Fourth of July celebration, and it was a, once again, successful and well-attended. I think everybody enjoyed themselves down there. I know I did, and I saw a few folks from here down there as well that looked like they were enjoying themselves. So it was, congratulations to the Fourth of July Committee for, once again, putting on a great show.
Just to echo that, what Mr. Kerry just said, I also wanted to give a shout-out to Wilmington Police for their Facebook post throughout the time. They were both entertaining and informative, and I appreciate that they, they really got the word out and also made it enjoyable, so that we saw, you know, that this is, this is the best part of our community is when we come together for, for events like that. So thank you to them.
Absolutely. And I would just certainly echo that, that it was a fantastic week, and thanks to the Fourth of July Committee and the, all the ORR groups and organizations that put it on, and what a successful event it was. And so thank you to all the volunteers. I know my family and my girls really enjoyed all the rides and all the food we had, so thank you very much.
I'll just say ditto.
And then, Mike Morris's last day is Friday, so if you have any questions for the accountant, make sure you get him in before Friday. 4:30, yeah, we don't let him leave early. I know he's been known to do that, so certainly, get in and see Mike Morris, but thanks to him and best of luck. Okay, on to new business. Is there any new business this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to our last portion of important dates, please.
First is the Farmers Market, which runs through October 13, Town Parking Lot, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. July 10, Concert on the Common. Next group is Ball in the House, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Also on the 10th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. July 11, as noted earlier, Inhabitant Bylaw Study Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. July 13, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. July 17, Concert on the Common, Jimmy and the Adjusters, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. July 17, Ice Rink and Recreation Facility Committee, Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. July 24, Concerts on the Common Backtrack, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. July 31, Concerts on the Common 60s Invasion, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then August 7 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded? All in favor? Good evening, everyone. Thank you.